City Council will come to order. Roll call.
Jolly Nelson, Naker, Prince, Tao, Tolbert, Council President Bren Moen. Five present, or four present, five present. Five present, one asks, excuse me, being Council Mayor Tao who is excused.
Please stand and join us if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as one.
Consent agenda items one through 14 are before you for your consideration.
And we are pulling item number 13 for separate consideration. Is there anything else we should take separately? Seeing none, Ms. Prince moves the balance of the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed, the consent agenda is adopted as amended. Item number 13, Resolution 19-72, approving the issuance of conduit revenue obligations by the Port Authority for the benefit of Concordia University St. Paul or any of its affiliates.
Um, this item, I believe Mr. Tao, who is absent today, excused absence today, was briefed on this issue, but it is talking about using conduit bonds for the sale, I believe, of a central medical building on University Avenue to convert it to a nonprofit use for Concordia. And I don't believe I have enough information to move forward to vote here today on this item. Is there, is there anyone from the port or Concordia here that could answer questions for us? Welcome.
Thank you. Peter Klein, Vice President Finance, St. Paul Port Authority.
Great. Um, we're, there's a few folks here on the council who've raised some concerns about this item. Often not, it's not about the institution that's behind the request, but we do approve conduit bonds for, for different nonprofit uses, particularly for charter schools. And, um, on this item, there just has been some questions, especially given the huge shift that we'll see in taxable parcels, in particular in central medicals, our understanding that at least for the city, and that's not including the school and the county, we'll see a reduction of $46,000 a year. So I think we'd like to know more about this and also know what kind of, if we decided to put this on a layover so that we could get more information, how that impacts your plan to move forward with this kind of a bond.
Well, the, we are the issuer and just acting as the issuer for the St. Paul Port Authority. The project is expected to close before the end of the year, or before the end of the month, excuse me. And so it would be a hardship to have it laid over. As far relating to the taxes, there's a significant portion of the building that is, that has taxable tenants within it. And that portion of the building will continue to pay, I'm not, I don't, at the moment, I'm not recalling exactly the term, but rather than property taxes, it'll, they will pay an additional fee. And so the $46,000s would not totally be lost.
Okay. And I mean, this is unusual coming from the Port Authority because I know you've been staunch advocates in not converting our taxable, especially taxable land, especially so very close to our Green Line investment and the interstate highway. So it's interesting that we're moving forward with this. And I guess I don't understand why it's necessary for the nonprofit entity to own the property. And I'm assuming then the parking area around it, which will also not be taxed.
Well, it depends, the parking, again, if they were charging fees or something, then that would remain on the tax rolls. So only the nonprofit portion of the building would go off of the property tax rolls. And so it will continue to pay property taxes to the extent that not, that for-profit entities are leasing or paying parking fees for the, for the structure. So there is a, it certainly is a close proximity to Concordia. Apparently it's a closer walking distance from the dean's office to, to the Central Midway Building, it's now called. They changed the letters. I remember when they changed, it was Central Medical and I think they kept the M the same, just changed the rest of it. So Central Midway Building, it's a closer walk there to some parts of the campus. So it is extremely close and convenient. They do occupy approximately one-third of the building right now. So it does make sense for them to actually own it rather than continuing to lease.
Mr. Tolbert.
Can you give a more general overview of what exactly will be happening and why the port's interested in it?
Why the port is interested in it? The city of St. Paul asked us to get involved. So this is, the issuance is bank-qualified conduit financing. And so the city of St. Paul's bank qualification was totally used up. So every municipality, every government, government entity in Minnesota receives a $10 million cap of bank-qualified abilities. And the city of St. Paul's was used up, so the city of St. Paul asked the Port Authority to come in and use 5.5 million of our $10 million allocation. Last year, we did this for Ling Blomsten, that it was a little over $9 million that we used of our $10 million allocation. So very similar bank-qualified conduit revenue bond issuance.
But, but excuse me for interrupting you. Did you expand Ling Blomsten beyond its boundaries when you, for the bonding? For the 10, 9.5 million dollars? Or was that just an investment in the existing infrastructure?
I think that was the rehabilitation of the structure.
Okay. It just strikes me as very odd that the Port Authority is backing this, so.
Well, it was at the request of the city of St. Paul to utilize our bank qualifications.
Ms. Naker.
Thank you. Mr. Klein, I just want to clarify, and I appreciate your being here to answer questions because I know you weren't expecting to do this.
I was not.
And it may be important to lay this over and hear more from, from Concordia themselves, I'm not sure. But I guess my question goes back to what you had said about currently there are taxable properties that are, that are tenants in the rest of the building and that when Concordia becomes the owner, the expectation is that some of the property would still remain taxable. Is that on the assumption that those tenants remain there? Because my understanding is if the, if the owner is a nonprofit, that they could first of all choose to take over more space in the building, and then if the taxable tenants go away, that, that amount of tax revenue goes down? And I, I don't know if you are privy to their plans, but it's, it would be helpful if you could lay out sort of what the assumption is that you're making, that we would continue to maintain the same taxable revenue.
Well, my crystal ball isn't clear and far into the future, but, uh, there are existing leases for existing taxable entities, and those are certainly going to proceed. And I'm not sure, I cannot speak to Concordia's need for additional space within the building. But to the extent that there are for-profit entities as tenants, that portion would have to pay, it isn't property tax, it's some other fee, but the equivalent of the same property tax that they would have paid.
Are there any other questions? Ms. Prince?
Um, I, and I appreciate as well that this is kind of the 11th hour for these questions, but it does surprise me in view of the fact that the port has been such a strong voice for not converting property from commercial and industrial to other uses. And, um, including, including advising us against doing a housing project in an industrial area where it would have been a tax-paying project, but just less of a tax-paying project. And the port saw fit in that case to get involved and, and basically ended up putting the, um, I mean, that project didn't happen because of the port's concerns. So, um, I guess I'm not sure what we should do, but it does seem like a huge policy issue that, that I wish had caught my attention much earlier.
Yeah, and I think I'm concerned at the moment that if we vote on this, that it's not going to pass. I, there's enough questions and concerns. So you said it would, we don't have a meeting on the fifth Wednesday of January, so we wouldn't meet again until the beginning of February, February 6th. You said it would be a hardship. Do you want to talk about that a little bit? Again, at this moment, I'm concerned that it will just not pass at all.
I must say, I was expecting to be out of here. And this is unexpected because we did bring it to staff, city staff has brought it to us. We did bring it to council members, staff, and in their discussions, nothing came up. And so it is rather a 11th hour notice. So, but I can't dictate the vote. It is going to be a hardship. It is really.
I guess what I'm wondering is, what is the hardship?
The planning was to, the financing is scheduled to be closed by the end of the month. And so the, the bondholder, the financier, everybody is in expect, has the expectations of closing before January 31st.
Um, Mr. Larson, do you have anything to add? I noticed you.
I mean, the, everything, everything pending, I suspect, would be pending approvals by the proper authority, so, I mean.
If it needs to get rescheduled.
If it needs to get rescheduled, they can reschedule.
Mr. Larson.
Council President and council members, actually, Mr. Klein has accurately stated the circumstances and, kudos to him, has also accurately stated the law with respect to conduit revenue bond financing and so forth. And he's also accurately stated the expectations as far as the processes with respect to, you know, the, the past customs, the practices and standards with respect to these bond approvals, but also respecting, of course, of the role that the, the St. Paul City Council plays in, in that. Based upon those expectations, yes. Closing January 31st, this body, of course, has the full power to, to lay it over. And then the parties will have to assess what that means as well as what the city means as far as what's the best for its residents. And that's your job.
Ms. Naker.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the responses and the helpful information and the discussion here. And I do think, given the circumstances, it would make sense to lay this over until the fifth, sixth. And I, listening to this conversation, I'm also just thinking about the studies that we've requested from the Planning Commission of the conversions of taxable to non-taxable properties. And I know that the department has a significant workload, but I'm, I'm really concerned about death by a thousand cuts when it comes to these individual votes that we take on taking property off the tax rolls, even for the best purposes and turning it over to non-taxable entities. So I guess whatever decision we make in two weeks, I, it feels disconnected to do these things in the absence of policy direction, which we depend on from, from staff and from study.
Yes. And that, the request for that information and follow-up has been pending for not months, but years. So I agree that it would be helpful to move that forward so that we don't end up in these decision makings on a case-by-case basis. So understanding that it could create some hardship, this is what this process is for, and I would make a motion that we lay the matter over until February, or Ms. Naker made the, a motion to lay the matter over till February 6th, 2019. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed, the resolution is laid over to February 6th. Item number 15, Resolution 19-164, appointing Kasim Busuri as the interim Ward 6 City Council member, filling the term of Councilmember Dan Bostrom through December 31st, 2019.
And this resolution is before us for discussion. I don't think Kasim is here today because we will be swearing him in on February 6th at 9 o'clock in the morning. Folks are welcome to join us for, that swearing ins are always a wonderful opportunity to hear what our, our new colleagues have in mind for their time here in office. So there's, the pomp and circumstance will be two weeks from now, but we're excited about our new colleague coming on board. If there's no discussion today, Ms. Nelson moves approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed, the resolution is adopted. Item number 16, Resolution 19-141, urging the federal government and the U.S. embargo of Cuba.
Looks like Ms. Prince.
And I would, I would like to call anyone here from the Cuba Committee or people in support of this resolution who'd like to come forward to do that. I also want to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Naker and Councilmember Tao for joining me and sponsoring this resolution. Since we have been working with the Cuba Committee, it has been amazing to us, the number of connections, the just myriad ways in which St. Paul and people in Cuba have had relationships, partnerships, business relationships, cultural ones throughout the last 150 years. And so I, the original resolution that came forward from the committee included about three pages of ways in which Cuba and St. Paul are partners. And I did ask the committee to trim it down a little bit because it'd be a lot of reading for me to do. So I'm going to read the resolution, but then I'm going to invite members of the committee to say a few words. Whereas there are many historic connections between the people of St. Paul and the people of Cuba, beginning in 1898, when St. Paul's African-American community staged several Cuba pageants celebrating Cuba's struggle for independence from Spain and the Spanish-American War. And whereas, although much limited by the U.S. embargo, academic, agricultural, governmental, and business connections have continued to grow between the state of Minnesota, the city of St. Paul, and Cuba. And whereas, a bust of Cuban national hero Jose Martí has stood in the northern stairwell of City Hall for many decades. And any of you who are here, or next time you visit St. Paul, please see it. It's, it's a beautiful sculpture. Whereas in 2008, the Minnesota Legislature passed a resolution calling for an end to the embargo against Cuba. And whereas in 2014 and 2018, Cuban diplomats visited St. Paul with the goal of fostering relationships between the city-state and Cuba. And whereas in 2015, Mayor Chris Coleman visited Cuba as part of a delegation that had been planned in his capacity as president of the National League of Cities. And whereas the U.S. embargo against Cuba continues to inflict hardship on the people of Cuba by creating shortages in many areas and costing the Cuban people at least $130 billion, according to the United Nations Regional Economic Body for Latin America. And whereas trade between the U.S. and Cuba benefits both countries, particularly in the areas of food production, education, healthcare, tourism, arts, music, biotechnology, and medical research. And whereas the overwhelming majority of countries in the United Nations General Assembly have for many years voted in favor of lifting the U.S. embargo against Cuba. And whereas on December 17th, 2014, the U.S. and Cuba agreed to establish diplomatic relations between the two countries. And whereas President Trump has ordered new restrictions on business and travel to Cuba, ordered all diplomatic staff withdrawn from the U.S. Embassy in Havana, and expelled diplomatic staff from the Cuban Embassy in Washington, D.C. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of St. Paul urges President Donald Trump to renew engagement with the Cuban government to create a new cooperative relationship, to reestablish diplomatic staffing of the U.S. Embassy in Havana, to reinstate diplomatic staff at the Cuban Embassy in Washington, D.C., and to remove barriers preventing Cuban academics and others from visiting the U.S. And be it further resolved that the City Council of the city of St. Paul urges Congress and the President to immediately end all aspects of the U.S. economic, commercial, and financial embargo against Cuba, including restrictions on travel to Cuba by U.S. citizens. I would like to introduce a constituent of mine, a resident of Ward 7, Carla Reely. Thank you, Carla. And first I'll present to all of you the resolution that you just heard. Thank you, Carla.
So my name is Carla Reely, and I'm a member of the Minnesota Cuba Committee, and I have here with me Mary Jean Babcock and Marcy Shapiro, also from the Cuba Committee, and Dixie Olmstead, who is with Witness for Peace and has just returned from leading one of many delegations to Cuba. And I want to thank council members who are supporting this as well, and especially Jane, who's represented by the ward that I've lived in for 32 years. So, um, between the four of us, we've made about 30 trips to Cuba. And we've come to, I think I can speak for all of us, we've come to love the country and the people, and also to understand something about its place in the world. So these trips are part of what is, was prompting our, our request to the city to adopt the resolution and to join eight other cities, including Minneapolis, that have already done so. We'll also be bringing similar resolutions to the legislature, which did pass one back in 2008, and to the cities of Duluth and Richfield, and possibly more. And we hope that other cities around the, the country will do the same thing. We believe that it's now more important than ever to act locally because of the inability of the federal government to basically address any issues, and also because the Trump administration is undoing so many of the steps that President Obama took toward normalization of relations. So you have the, the background information in your, with you, and I was going to pass out these friendship buttons if people are interested in taking those, we're all wearing them. And we have a number of supporters in the audience, including a Cuban-American and a Somali-American, as well as other native-born people here. So there, there are a lot of people who, who are in favor of getting rid of this embargo. So as Jane said, St. Paul has a long history of connection to Cuba, starting in 1888 with the African-American pageants supporting Cuba in the Spanish-American War, bust of Jose Martí, and the visit by two diplomats in the last few years trying to foster relations because they see Minnesota and St. Paul as a, as a wonderful opportunity to make friends. Couple of years ago, the Ordway devoted a whole season to Cuban music and dance. So that's one example of the things we can do more of. So just to reiterate what's in the, the resolution, the embargo of Cuba by the U.S. is unique in the world. It's cost the Cuban economy and its people an estimated $130 billion. There's no other country in the world that we punish that way, including those with appalling human rights records. So we ask for your support in helping to right this wrong. Dixie, Dixie Olmstead from Witness for Peace.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carla.
Thanks, thanks all for listening. I'm, I live in Ward 3, Chris Tolbert's ward. And so I just want to have a, as Carla said, I just returned, it was a week ago today, from Cuba. And while we were there with a Witness for Peace delegation, we spent most of our time in Havana. We went out to the Bay of Pigs for a couple of nights. And one of the things that I've seen a lot of changes since 2003, when I first went to Cuba, and they've made great strides in education, healthcare, but always, these things are held back by the specter of the U.S. embargo. So they're unable to import a lot of medicine and food and, and parts that they need for machinery and for electronic things. So as Carla said, President Obama had lifted some of the travel restrictions for U.S. citizens to travel to Cuba so that people could learn more about Cuba and the Cuban people. In 2015, when I went, were there a couple people here that went back there, back, we were at the Bay of Pigs, we were there and Raoul Castro had opened up some of the Cuban economy to private, private enterprise with bed and breakfast and for private restaurants. And we just saw just all kinds of activity out there with, with Cubans trying to enlarge their homes to provide homes, bed and breakfast places for tourists. And there were a lot of American tourists that were coming down with a people-to-people license then. But now, went back this year, back to the Bay of Pigs again, and there were, there were a lot more in that, those three years, there were a lot more bed and breakfast, but there weren't, there were hardly any Cuban or American tourists there because of the restrictions that President Trump reimposed on that travel. And another thing that really impressed me is meeting again with two young men from the Latin American School of Medicine, two U.S. students at the Latin American School of Medicine, which trains doctors from all over the world to return to their countries. And so we met with Ivan from Houston, Texas, and with Steve from Los, Los Angeles, and they told us about their training at the Latin American School of Medicine, which is, and the goals that they want to have for their medical practices when they come back to the United States, which is community-based, as it is in Cuba. It's preventive in scope, and it's readily accessible to everyone, and the care is very compassionate. They were very compelling in their talks with us. So they plan to return to the States after their medical school training in Cuba, and take their board exams and return to their own communities with this, with this wonderful training. So those are just a few of the things that tell me that the policy that we have of this embargo- that we have of this embargo is, you know, it's just, it's outdated and it's just a relic of, of the past. So thank you all for listening. And yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you have questions for us, or?
No, that was, I was kind of, when, when Ms. Prince was reading the resolution, I wondered what the whole three pages looked like. So it's really dense and wonderful. I guess I did have one question, and maybe it was in the edited version, but what, how many miles is it from the edge of the U.S. border to Cuba?
From, from the Keys to Cuba, about 90 miles.
90 miles.
Yeah.
It's incredible. It's incredible. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
With that, Ms. Prince moves the resolution?
Moves the resolution.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Five, excuse me, five in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 17, second reading of ordinance 19-2, granting the application of James Jarman and Sarah Jarman to rezone the property at 541 Selby Avenue from RM2 multi-family residential to BC community business, amending Chapter 60 of the Legislative Code pertaining to the zoning map. This ordinance is laid over to February 6 for third reading public hearing. Item number 18, second reading of ordinance 19-3, granting the application of Peggy Dahl to rezone property at 1375 Cleveland, Cleveland Avenue North from RM1 low-density multi-family residential to RM2 multi-density, medium-density multi-family residential, amending Chapter 60 of the Legislative Code pertaining to the zoning map. This ordinance is laid over to February 6 for third reading public hearing. Item number 19, Resolution Public Hearing 19-17, giving host approval to the issuance of conduit multi-family housing revenue bonds by the City of Coon Rapids on behalf of Common Bond Communities for the Community Plaza Project at 709 Central Avenue.
And apologies again to folks who may have been confused by our announcement of these, the notice of these public hearings, but this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Mr. Tolbert moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 20, Resolution Public Hearing 19-18, amending the financing spending plans in the Police Department grant fund in the amount of $133,000 for the high intensity drug trafficking area projects.
This is a public hearing? Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Legislative hearing consent agenda items 21 through 25 are before you for your consideration.
And we have been advised that there are no, there's no one here that we are aware of to testify to these legislative public hearings. So we will have the, hear the balance of this agenda, 21 through 25 now. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to any items between 21 and 25? Seeing none, Ms. Nelson moves to close the public hearings and approve. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Four in favor, no one opposed. The consent, the public hearing is closed and the consent agenda is adopted as amended.
All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Are, do people have news from the wards, things they'd like to share before we adjourn? I will, I will share on behalf of all of us that this Friday is the annual Neighborhood Honor Roll gathering at 5:30 at the University of St. Thomas, where we celebrate people who are huge contributors in their neighborhoods. And it's a wide range of people who do volunteer work for the schools and gardening and small business. Incredible opportunity to really learn what's happening around the city. And if you haven't signed up, there's probably still room for, for you to make it. But it is a, it's a wonderful event that we all look forward to, so Neighborhood Honor Roll. Ms. Naker.
Thank you. And just a reminder to our millions of listeners at home that our third annual business awards nominating process is open now. It is open through February 15, promptly at 5:00 p.m. So you can self-nominate if you're a business owner in St. Paul, or you can nominate your favorite local business for awards in a variety of categories. We've had two years of outstanding award winners now, and we're looking forward to recognizing the businesses that, that are award winners and the linchpins of our neighborhoods in the year to come.
Great. Anything else in news from the wards? All right. Seeing none, we are adjourned.